Good evening. Welcome to the September 19th, 2017 regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If we would all please stand for the invocation and the fudge as you wish.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all safely here on this beautiful day. Father, we ask that you look over, help and heal those families affected by the natural disasters, as well as those families that have tragically loved ones in the last couple of days in our county. May their faith in you lift them up and give them the comfort in these most difficult of times. Lord, we are so very blessed to have students in schools in Forsyth County that are as successful as they are. As always, we ask that you lead us and guide us as we do the work of the school system this evening and in the days and weeks to come. We know that even in difficult times, your love and forgiveness will lead us through. In your name we pray, amen. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to start by saying Mr. Tom Cleveland is not with us tonight. His wife recently had surgery and he is taking care of her. So all votes tonight, if there are four oh, will be unanimous decision and we wish his wife a speedy recovery. He will be watching the tape tonight so he can catch up on anything he might have missed by not being here. Okay. We have before us an agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
A motion by Anna, second by Nancy. All in favor? That is unanimous. First item up is recognitions with Mr. Joey Perkel.
It's a pleasure to be able to present recognitions this afternoon. We have several and that's always a great thing. So we're going to go ahead and get started. Our first recognition comes from the National Geography Bee. We have a state winner and this student is from Riverwatch Middle School. So when I call your name, if you would, come down this side of the room and move across in this direction. But our National Geography Bee state winner from Riverwatch Middle School is Vashell Soretty. So Vashell, can I? Now do we have family members for Vashell here and Riverwatch Middle School folks in support of him? Will you stand so we can say thank you for supporting him? Thank you, very proud of you. Our next recognition comes from Young Georgiaothers. Again, another state winner. This is from Forsyth Central High School and it is Myung Tumanji. And were there family members and school folks here to support her stand? So we say thank you. Thank you very much and congratulations. Our next recognition is Red Nose Challenge. First place team. Now some of you may be saying, as I did, what is the Red Nose Challenge? The Red Nose Challenge is a national contest aimed at eliminating childhood poverty. These three girls had the idea to start a program at Lakeside Middle called Pass It On, which collects items such as food and clothing throughout the year to provide to children in the community in need. They received $5,000 to use toward this project, video equipment package for the school, as well as individual prizes. So they did a phenomenal job and they won first place for this. So when I call your names, if you would come forward. It's Ansley Cotwella. Rock Sheeda Gorapati. And Elizabeth Ryan. Now if you're a family member here to support them or school folks, and I know some of the school folks are already standing in the back, the principals back there, so will you stand so we can say thank you? I know you're proud of them as well as, as so are we. Our next recognition is from a large group. It's the HOSA International Leadership Conference. And this is the largest middle school chapter in the world and it's from South Forsyth Middle School. So we have several of these. I'll start with the first place Health and Career Display and that goes to Sophia Dilibabu Our first place for healthy lifestyles goes to Oxida Privada. And for second place Prepare for Speaking is Kabir Jain. And for second place Medical Terminology is Farini Ramakrishnan Kavita. And third place Health Career Exploration is Tony Winkler. And for third place Nutrition is Sarushthi Talati. Okay, now if you're a family member of any of these students or South Forsyth Middle School employee here to support them, will you stand so we can thank you? Our next group is also a large group, so it's a team effort. This is our first robotics competition, Peachtree District State Champions. And this goes to the Forsyth Central High School Team Auto. And I know that Mr. and Mrs. Scholar is here to represent them, as well as Jonathan Lilly, I think was their team captain. So if Jonathan, you're here, so if you would come forward. And could we ask, because this is a large group, I'm not sure how many of those students are here, if you are on the first robotics competition, would you please stand? There are a lot of them. Now if you're a parent of any of these students, would you please stand so we can recognize you for your support? Forsyth Central, I know the principals back there. Great job. And they also are our, I think Superior Performance Spotlight. So that will conclude with our recognitions with that. So we ask if you would please stay, because we do have one more Superior Performance Spotlight recognition and our board would be seated for that. And so I'm not sure who's presenting that. But if you would, come forward for the Superior Performance Spotlight.
Where would be the best place to move the stands so I can see the slides?
So you can move the slides?
Um, anywhere where...
Okay, I just don't want to be in the way.
Yes, I'm, I've already seen my robot thing tonight. But we are Team Auto, Team 746 at Forsyth Central High School. And we are the high school's first robotics competition, or FRC team. So what exactly does the FRC team do at Forsyth Central High School? So FRC is a competitive robotics competition that is internationally competed in, a world event. There are over 3,000 teams in the entire world from countries such as Israel, Germany, France, Japan, Korea, Canada, Mexico, and many others that all come to compete in this one competition. The competition consists of a six-week build season followed up by many different districts, regional, state, and even world events, in which have teams competing from all over different regions and different areas coming together for this one competition. So this is a picture of our robot from this past season, which is up here for those who can't see it. And so every year, there's a new game introduced that we have a new six-week build period to make it. So this was 2017's robot, but in January, we will be receiving a new game and we will have to create an entirely new bot based upon whatever the game is for this year. So how do we do FRC at Forsyth Central High School? We run much like a company does, with teams and sub-team leaders helping to manage different aspects of the team, almost like a bureaucracy you'd see in many major companies worldwide. We also have mentors and coaches who are real professional experts from their field coming in to help us and help us gain education and experience in potential job fields. So when we graduate high school, we have a gateway and a means to a career that interests us in whatever field we choose, whether it be engineering, business, programming, or whatnot. We also collaborate with sponsors on a year-to-year basis. And these sponsors can provide us with many things. One such thing can be funding, which can come in monetary and material form, in which they will gift us materials or money to help fund the robot because, simply because we want to be better, want to go forward with this robot. They also give us mentors as well. For example, Callan Hill, who's our lead mentor, comes from a local company called Press Number of America. And Callan actually plays a really crucial role in the teams, because he's a giant role model to all of us who are students. He shows us what a real-life engineer is and what it really means to be an engineer with critical thinking skills and critical design processes that help us to experience an accurate depiction of an engineer. So why do we do what we do on Team Auto? We do it for a learning experience, one part. So through Team Auto, we have to build a cohesive team of many different members that come from different backgrounds, different ideologies, that all come together to create this one really cool, really big robot. We're also working in a professional setting. Many times, you'll find an FRC student going to different businesses around the area or going to different training sessions trying to become better and more professional at what they do. We here on Team Auto find it important to ourselves to become experts in our field and what we do, so when we do graduate high school and go on to a post-secondary education, we are better prepared and we're the top of the class for wherever we go. So what have we accomplished in our run as Team Auto? We were the past year's state champions, as mentioned already, but we've also had two district event wins last year. In total, we have had three district event wins, but for the past season, we only won two. We've also been to the world championship three times, going back-to-back in previous seasons. We've also been twice to the IRI Robotics Invitational, which is the deepest level of postseason play that you can go to and is an invitational terminology. We are also the only team from Georgia that ever make it into the playoffs of IRI, which is a very huge accomplishment to all of us. We've also won seven different awards for excellence in design and quality on our robot. So what do we do for community outreach? On Team Auto, we are more than just a robotics team. We are an enrichment for the county and for the community around us. And we do many things to help enrich the STEM ideology in the students and adults around our area. One such example is Autobatics. Autobatics is a camp put on by members of the team, organize and run, to help teach kids from second grade to eighth grade about robotics and how to just garner some interest in STEM from them and really drive up that wanting to be a part of an engineering field. And we put this on during summers and winters to help raise money for our team, but also to help raise up students for the next generation of Team Auto. Everything we do on Team Auto is based around sustainability for our team and for the county. We also do STEM nights, which we do in collaboration with Forsyth Central High School. Forsyth Central High School has a STEM academy. Many times, they'll go to different local elementary or middle schools to show it off and kind of gain interest for it. And we'll do the same thing. We'll go along with them, because we also want to stir up interest for STEM, but we also want to stir up interest for our robot and show just how awesome STEM and robotics really are to everyone. Also, it's a lot of fun. So like I said, it is a giant robot. This is about a five foot by five foot by five foot, well not five foot, five foot by five foot by two foot robot. It weighs about 120 pounds. So this isn't exactly, you know, a little Lego mind-storm robot. This is some serious steel and aluminum going on. We also get to build international relationships. Like I said earlier, there are teams from all over this world, from many different countries that come to compete in the FRC competition. With that, we get to build relationships and friendships with people from all over the world, from different cultures and different backgrounds, that really allow for this awesome meshing of ideas, which makes for a cooler robotics competition in general. We also have really exciting competitions in which, as you can see on the photo, I get very excited. They are a lot of fun and you just get, like I said, it's all about meeting new people and starting these really awesome ideas and seeing really cool robots. Because let me tell you something, every robot is different. There is not two robots in this entire world for FRC that'll be the exact same. And that's something really awesome when you think about it, because it just shows how critically, like, thinking these students are, because you see there are many solutions to one problem. And it really shows and really shines here in FRC. And also, there are really great awards. There are, like I said, we have received seven different awards for quality and excellence in robotics. But there's also individualized awards, such as Dean's List and Engineering Inspiration, that allow individuals and individual teams to be recognized for excellence beyond the call of just robotics. And it's just such a rewarding experience in and of itself to be a part of this team and to learn from the mentors and from the other students as well. And that is FRC. So I'm going to demonstrate our robot for you guys.
Is that a fight?
If you're on the first line, watch your toes. So that's one mechanic of the game.
Okay, tell us what the game, what's your assignment?
So the assignment for this game, the game was called Steamworks. And it was a steampunk themed game in which you had to fill up a blow with pressure using energy or fuel cells, which are those green little footballs. And that was fill up steam pressure to ready your airship for takeoff. But also, you had to bring gears to your airship as well to help prepare the flight system for takeoff. It's a lot of cheesy little, like, tie-ins of steampunk, but it's really fun. And so there was a lot of different objectives. You also had to climb a rope to get onto the airship to be ready for liftoff as well. So I don't think, you in the back might not be able to see, but on the very back of the robot, there's actually, it almost looks like a drum covered in Velcro. And so what we would do is we would drive up to a Velcro strap and have to lift that 120-pound robot at least three feet off the ground without having the rope break, and we had to maintain that for a second and still hold it up there. So there's a lot of ways to score points and it was a really fun game, really interesting this year. And there's another one coming up called FRC Power Up is the name of 2018 game. And it's like a video game retro game. And we'll be learning more about that game on January 6th, 2018. But for now, we just have the name of the game, don't have any rules or anything. Like I said, it's a new game every year and kickoff happens beginning of January and right from there, you get to get going, start building.
How many times did you have to change your design for this robot to get it to where it is today?
So the robot actually went through a couple of different iterations. So we originally had one, you know, really good robot, it was winning district events and was doing great. But at Athens, we were one of the best spots in state, but when we went to Athens, which was the state competition, we were like, you know what? Being good isn't good enough. So we actually tore off the top half of the robot and rebuilt it in 11 hours, just for fun. But in all honesty, throughout the season, you go through many different design iterations. Michael Lavier is kind of our head of CAD, CAD, which is computer aided design, and it's a 3D design process. He can tell you that he spent many weeks on end designing, redesigning, and redesigning again, because simple designs weren't good enough, or he wanted to make them better, or there's just more improvements to make on the robot.
Just as far as solving the problem, you want to, so as the season progresses, teams just around the world get better and better. So in order to play as well as you want to, we have to continue to adapt throughout the season. And yeah, like Kyle said, at state, we actually redesigned the whole robot team top half up. So we added the fuel shooter, which we finished later earlier.
And did it work?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did.
Those last minute fangs can be.
So thank you very much. I'm so impressed, not only with their critical thinking, there must have been some collaboration going on, some team working, so it's so much more than just robotics. So very, very impressed with you all. Thank you very much. We are going to take a very short recess before we start the business part of our program. If you'd like to exit, now would be a great time. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to do that as well. Ready to reconvene. The next item up on our agenda is the consent agenda. And before we get into the details of it, I would like to make a brief announcement. This is the second time that I've read this statement concerning the future Forsyth County Library. Once again, out of an abundance of caution upon the advice of legal counsel from Forsyth County, I want to disclose on record that I am both a sitting member of the library board and also the Board of Education. The transaction involving the property at Denmark High School is the product of an intergovernmental agreement between the Board of Education and the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. The library board is not a party to that transaction, but they may be a beneficiary to that transaction. The library board has been involved with the Board of Ed in working through the site plans and configurations to determine how much of the Denmark property is to be acquired. The decision will ultimately determine how much funding the library board will commit to the land acquisition transaction, which has now been determined. I believe that my efforts on the behalf of the library board facilitated a win-win for the Board of Education and the library board, and will ultimately advance the interests of all involved to include the Board of Education, the library board, and the Board of Commissioners. I am mindful that the simultaneous service of the Board of Education and library board could carry in it the appearance of impropriety, but of course, I am not benefited in any way personally from any of these transactions. For the purposes of this evening, I want to formally state for the record my dual roles on both the library board and the Board of Education. I want to emphasize that I'm not personally benefited in any way by this transaction and I want to make it clear that I can continue my service on the Board of Ed and the library board in a neutral, objective, and in good faith manner, and will continue to do so until I believe that a true disqualifying conflict exists. Okay. All right, that being said, next up is the consent agenda. Has everyone had time to review all those items? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Anna, second by Nancy. All in favor? That is unanimous. Next up is public participation. I'd like to read a brief statement on the policy. Board Policy BCBI sets forth the rules for public participation and copies are available on the back table. Anyone requesting to speak to the board must sign a form indicating that they've read and will follow the requirements of this policy. Tonight, we have six people that have requested to speak to the board. Public participation is designed to allow citizens to speak to the board and board members do not respond during this part of the agenda unless they have specific questions for the presenter. We ask that you, if you have the same ideas or concepts of the first person, if you could try not to be redundant and present your ideas as original and different. First up to speak tonight is Angela Johnson in regards to redistricting.
Good evening. I'm a resident of the Gates at Luberon, a 32-home community within the Lambert School District. We total 32 students in our community, 11 of which are currently enrolled at Lambert High School. Seven are middle school students, 14 are elementary school. Our students attend Sharon Elementary, South Forsyth Middle, and Lambert High School. We average, according to the Student Yield Report, roughly eight high school students per year that attend Lambert. Our impact is low as compared to the 483 students living south of 141 that are currently enrolled at Lambert that will drive past our community on their way to school. On behalf of our community, we respectfully request the decision to move our students to a high school outside our feeder pattern, school feeder pattern be rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next up is Kim Belos, and again about redistricting.
Hey, good evening. I'm a resident of Three Chimneys Farm and have brought a lot of neighbors with me and just wanted to pass along the observations I have made and the distraught that is going on in our neighborhood regarding our move to South Forsyth High School from Lambert. I don't know if many of you saw on Facebook and other medias, but we did do a TCF walk to Lambert this morning where we had probably 50-plus students make the walk from our neighborhood to Lambert. It was less than a mile and I think it took them about 10 to 15 minutes to make that walk. The current route, if you're driving it, from Three Chimneys Farm to Lambert is 1.8 miles. That movement to South Forsyth High School would be 4.3 miles. So proximity alone, we would ask that you consider leaving us at Lambert. And secondly, the safety of our children. Our children are going to be on buses, they're going to be driving, they're going to be teenage drivers at some point. They're going to have to navigate Sharon Road, which we know is slated to be expanded to a four-lane road. In addition, they're going to have to navigate potentially Peachtree Parkway. There's a second route down Windermere, which puts them on Melody Meiser and Dave's Creek, also very congested, two-lane, not very well-lighted roads. This all will be outlined in our feedback to you via the online survey, but we do respectfully ask that you reconsider moving us to South Forsyth High School and leaving us at Lambert High School.
Thank you very much. Next up is Cheryl Gray about redistricting.
I'm from Three Chimneys Farm as well, so this is a little bit repetitive, but we are incredibly passionate about our community right now. We have been a part of Lambert for a very long time and I know that that doesn't hold its weight in water. However, we are trying to understand the decision behind how we are getting redistricted to south at this point. I know it's a first draft, but when we look at all of the facts that we have pulled together as a community, we are clearly closer than any of the other communities that are south of 141. We have a feeder pattern, which we were told feeder patterns are very important. We have a feeder pattern of being at Sharon Elementary, which is obviously right next to Lambert High School. When you are next to a high school, your culture begins from the time you're five years old. I would question that Brookwood Elementary does not quite have that same type of culture from South Forsyth High School or Lambert High School, simply because of lack of proximity. So us having the shared entrance, the teachers and administrators at our school from the time our children were five, our kids have thought they're going to be Longhorns. The other aspect that we looked at was transportation and logistics. For us, obviously Kim brought this up, but we can walk. Legitimately, every child in our neighborhood could walk. If the buses shut down one day, we could walk to school. We can't say the same thing for the other neighborhoods. We, if we do have to drive, it's one and a half miles from the front of our clubhouse to the side entrance of Lambert. It's one and a half miles. And I would question that putting us on a bus that would go four miles to get over to south, the county is now starting to incur additional costs for the buses that they don't have today. don't have today. So I would respectfully ask all of you to please reconsider Three Chimneys Farm to keep us at Lambert. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next up is Kimberly Webb. Dominic, and I can't quite read it. I'll let you.
Pon-Trell-Li.
Can you spell that for me? Thank you, sorry.
Sure. I'm a resident of Creekstone, and there are a lot of, you know, issues around the redistricting from a commute perspective, where we have actually residents within a mile of South Forsyth and being asked to drive, I don't know, four and a half, five miles to Denmark. Seven. Good, thank you. That wasn't my primary purpose of the comment, but since it wasn't stated, I just want to make sure we officially state that the amount of students transferring, or I guess, you know, Pione versus Vicari, again, Pione being one mile away from the high school, and taking those students and leaving Vicari students where they're much closer to the high school. Again, from a geography perspective, it absolutely makes no sense. We understand this is an economic decision on behalf of the Board, and we shouldn't be penalized because of the poor planning on Denmark and lack of funding based upon the geography that it represents. The second point, which I feel is critically important, is around students. And I believe this is what the Board of Education is all about, is our students. When we had redistricting in Lambert and in West, there was a rationale of a rising junior has lettered in a specific sport that that student-athlete would remain, would have the opportunity to remain at the existing high school and not be forced to move. As you know, in the case of South Forsyth, they're a 7A school, predominant in a variety of sports, both boys and girls. And for a current sophomore to have put in two years into a program and competing at the highest levels of 7A and having opportunities for playoffs and greater exposure to college, I don't understand the rationale of you stripping that away from that student. And this was the case at Lambert and is the case at West. You gave that student-athlete the opportunity to stay, so we'd like to have a clear understanding of the rationale why you are now stripping that and taking that away from the student-athlete. And this is certainly not in the best interest. If they have to go to Denmark, that program's going to take a couple of years to rebuild, and they're going to lose state playoff, they're going to lose exposure, they're going to lose college opportunities that they otherwise would have had if they were able to stay at South Forsyth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, last up is Howard Chalmers.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Dr. Bearden, Board. My name's Howard Chalmers. I am also a resident of Three Chimneys Farms. I've got a student, a son at Sharon, a son at South Middle, and a son at Lambert. And I'm going to take a little bit different tack, I think. I'm also the Cub Master of PAC 415, Cub Scout PAC 415, which meets at Sharon, and we are the Cub Scout PAC for Sharon. We have boys from first through fifth grade, starting a new pilot program in kindergarten. And those boys and those families and Cub Scouts come together and we sort of make a bigger family. And the mission of Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout Oath and Law. In my four years involved with the PAC, we've seen Cub Scouts bridge out when they are halfway through fifth grade, they leave the PAC, they move to Boy Scouts, then they leave Sharon, and they go to middle school, and they either go to Riverwatch, or they go to South Middle. And most of them go to the same Boy Scout troop, which meets over on James Burgess at St. Columbus Church. And they're at different schools, they've got different activities in school, but they come together for scouts, and they know that they're going to get back together in high school. We've got high schoolers that are part of that troop, that mentor, that are den chiefs for the students at Sharon. One of those students is in the audience tonight. In my fourth-grade den right now, five of the 14 fourth graders that are in the den are in Three Chimneys Farm. They're going to be at Sharon, they're going to go off to middle school, and then they're going to go to some other high school, based on the current map. They're going to lose the opportunity to be back on the campus at Sharon. If they're not at Lambert, they can't walk right next door. And those students, those Sharon students, see their older scout buddies in band at football games, they see them on campus, some of them are mentors in the school. And we have a community that starts in kindergarten and grows through elementary school, and it survives middle school, because you have to survive middle school. And then it gets back together, and it is cemented in high school. And the Lambert-Sharon campus, the fact that those schools share a driveway, it's a back driveway for Lambert, but they still share a driveway, and they share a parking lot. Lambert students park at Sharon. Those guys are part of our neighborhood, they're part of that community, and I would hate to see that ripped apart by a pretty big part of that community move into a different school. So definitely appreciate your reconsideration of drawing Three Chimneys and where it is in the map and keep it at Lambert. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for thoughtful comments. That is the last of our speakers tonight. Thank you very much for being respectful and expressing your concerns, everyone. Next up is presentation and discussion, starting with a redistricting update by Mr. Joey Perkel.
Just a quick or brief update, I suppose, regarding the redistricting. So I would like to just talk to you a little bit about the redistrict, again, about the redistricting process and the parameters that the committee uses during this process. I mean, obviously, we've been through this several times before, and I would say that 95% of the folks on the committee have gone through several future redistricting efforts. But just to kind of talk to you just a little bit about some of the parameters that we use when, or the committee uses when making decisions. One is to, obviously, to populate the new school, which will be Denmark High School. And also looking at keeping feeder patterns consistent when possible. That's a big thing that we take into consideration and look at and spend a lot of time talking about. When we don't have feeder patterns that are consistent, we look to make sure that we at least have a 20/80 split. That's kind of been our rule of thumb over the last several years, that we don't have a feeder pattern that's less than 20%, but it stays within the 20/80%. The other parameter that we certainly looked at with this redistricting and continue to look at with this redistricting, we're not done for sure, is opening east in the next four to five years. So we have to keep that in mind when we're looking at students and where they move from different areas. Another parameter is to look at current enrollment and future projections. We're looking at projections, and we're looking at, again, enrollments and what happens in the future. And to, the entire process is data-driven, and it's by study area. It's a very fluid process. We're looking at the study areas, and we're, again, keeping all these other parameters in mind when we're looking at what we create for a first map to send out.
Could I just interrupt you for just one second? Just explain study area a little bit, that it's, a lot of people want numbers by subdivision, and it's not by subdivision.
We do not have.
Just explain a study area a little bit.
We don't have, we don't look at numbers by subdivisions. The maps and the system that we use has the areas divided into study areas.
Because there's a lot of homes off of like a main row that might not ever be in a subdivision that have to be included. That's why you have these study areas.
Right. So the study areas are labeled, for example, it may be 43C or 409A, and those study areas, we can click onto those and know that, okay, within this study area, which is not necessarily a subdivision, or it may be more than a subdivision, there are X number of students in that study area. When possible, I mean, I'm sorry, when the process starts, you know, when we start this process, everything is on the table. Our job is to do the best that we can that's within the best interest of the school district and the entire school system. We base all of this, again, on data that is, you know, when we create the map. Most areas we're redistricting, also in this specific or particular area, especially in the southern part of our county, is extremely congested. A lot of those areas are very congested, and some may be close to schools, and some may not be. They're very high-growth areas. So you could have one study area that's extremely small, but it may have, you know, 200 or 300 kids in it. Whereas in other areas of the county, there may be a study area that's very large geographically, but it may only have 100 kids, 100 students, projected students in that study area. So, again, we also thought that, and again, with this map that we presented to you all, that for the first draft that we sent out, that was in the best interest of the district to move these areas that we moved, the committee felt that based on the parameters that we used to develop the map. Again, it's, again, I want to reiterate, it's a very fluid process. It's the very beginning of the process. We have now, obviously, it's out there, we have folks that have looked at it, and they're providing us with some very good feedback. That's why we do that, because we want to hear their feedback. There's a process online for them to provide the feedback. I'll tell you what the committee will, what we do, is then once the, once the time has ended for them to provide the feedback, then the committee will take all of that feedback. We sit down in a room with those maps and the computer system that we can pull all those areas up, and then we look at, we have reviewed all of that feedback, we go through that, and then we, as a committee, again, keeping all the parameters that we have and keeping in mind what we think is the best for the district, what we need to make, are there changes that we would recommend to you all as a board? Again, this is a committee-created draft. It's not a board-created draft. We, the committee, created the draft.
Just tell them the makeup of the committee a little bit, too, like the transportation director and who's on that.
Well, the makeup of the committee is, of course, is myself, it's the person at the central office who's in charge of her GIS system and can look at all the study areas and split study, those kinds of things. It's Tim Amerson, who is in our facilities department, who can tell you probably the name of every single road in the district and every single zoning that's in the next five years.
When you say district, you mean the school district, the county as a whole?
The school district, county as a whole. We have Jennifer Coragello, who is our communications person, we have Mike Satterfield, who is our transportation director, and then we have, in this case, we have a high school principal who can also kind of keep us, you know, okay, here's a high school perspective, those kind of things. We will bring in principals from the schools who have been affected at different times. They're not on the committee the entire time, but the core of the committee are those folks. And so we sit again, and we look at it, and then we, but we're at the point now where, again, we're collecting the feedback, folks are providing us with good feedback, we'll take that, we'll look at it, the committee will then sit back down, we'll spend a lot of time going through that and looking at all of that and determining, okay, what do we think then as a committee? Are there changes that we think we, as a committee, need to make based on what we feel would be best for the district that we would present back to you as a board? There may be changes, I can't speak for the committee, we've not done that step yet. So there may be changes, there may not be changes. I wouldn't want to stand here and say there will be changes or there will not be changes. But we'll look at that. As you will know from the timeline, that the online feedback ends on September the 27th, and then we have time to meet, and then we will do that and present a draft back to you as a board on October the 10th, based on what we feel as a committee, if there are any changes and what those changes are, and how we feel we needed to make those changes based on the information that we have and that we've gathered from the feedback. But we've just started the feedback, so we're not, obviously, we're not to the point that we're waiting on that step. I did want to also review and reiterate a couple of things that was on the website from, at the, on Friday, I believe it was, after your, I mean, I'm sorry, on Wednesday after your meeting last week regarding out-of-district process and those kinds of things. But, and that is, when you're talking about, you know, which existing schools are impacted to relieve, obviously, you know, we have elementary, some elementary, and then the high school. So when you're talking about out-of-districts, you know, who can stay at the existing school for 2018-19 school year under the out-of-district process? And for elementary, rising fifth graders who've been redistricted may remain at their current school for the 18-19 school year by completing an out-of-district form. Siblings of the rising fifth grader may remain at their current school under the out-of-district process for the one year. After the 2018, that allows the rising fifth graders to finish that one year. After the 2018-19 school year, the siblings must attend the school where they've been redistricted. For high school, obviously, we would do not open Denmark with a senior class, so the rising 12th graders who've been redistricted will remain at their current school for the 18-19 school year by completing the out-of-district, going through that process. As Denmark will only open with grades nine through 11. Siblings of rising 12th graders may remain at their current school under the out-of-district process, and the Forsyth County school system will provide best transportation for those students for the 18-19 school year, for the high school students, because they don't have a choice but to do that. We're not opening it with them, so we provide that service to them.
So for one year.
For that one year. Students who have completed two years of the same CTAE career pathway that will not be offered at their districted school, and they need the third and final class to receive recognition or certification for that, may stay at their existing school by completing the out-of-district form. The students must be currently enrolled in the second class right now, today, in the 17-18 school year, and they can complete the third and final class next year, 18-19, and there's a link on the website for what those are. And there's a document that says, and I won't go through all those, but there's a document that says Lambert pathways that will not be offered at South. South pathways that are not offered at Denmark. And they can do that for that. South for South High School students who are currently 10th graders and on track for entering the IB program during the 18-19 school year may stay by completing out-of-district form, but the South High School administration are the ones who verify if the students are considered on track. Denmark High School, as well as all existing schools, will have fine arts. Students will not be allowed to remain at their current school for these programs as the school will offer those programs. The out-of-district process opens December the 1st, so it will not even be open and available for parents to apply for that until December the 1st. And it closes on the 19th, because we have to have time to process all that and determine who's where in order for facilities to do projections, in order for HR department to start working on staffing allotments for the next school year. And all schools involved in the redistricting, no, I think I just said that. So anyway, so that basically, and again, that's on the website, so that's a summary of the out-of-district process.
A couple of clarifications. You mentioned the unique, I'll call it the unique pathways at Lambert and South, but West also has a list.
Oh, yeah. I just didn't go through all of them. Yeah, I said Lambert to South and then South to Denmark, but yes, there are West to Denmark too, the West pathways that are not offered.
Okay, and you mentioned. Okay, and you mentioned fine arts not with the exception of orchestra.
Orchestra at Lambert.
This doesn't happen anywhere else. You just want to throw a point about the Alliance Academy, that being another option for?
Well, the Alliance Academy obviously will also open in the fall of two thousand eighteen, eighteen, which is a non-traditional high school and I won't get into all that, but, because I, that's not my area of expertise. But it will be opening, it's coming. So that certainly is an option for parents who wish to, for their students to enroll in the Alliance Academy.
And it'll open with ninth, the tenth graders.
The application process starts October second.
Right.
Six hundred ninth, ninth and tenth graders.
So there'll be students from all high schools will be able to. Anne, you had?
Yes, Joey, I just wanted to verify the, the minimum number of students that we needed in Denmark to open up so that those students would have access to equal education.
Well, when we, we, when the committee started their work to populate Denmark, the number that we were shoot, the number that we had on the table was eighteen hundred students. Knowing that if we could get that, that would be great. But also knowing that if we were, you know, around thirteen hundred, we, we would feel okay about that. Eight hundred better, okay, thirteen. But we really, you know, are hoping that we don't go below that number. You know, because the problem there, that happens there then, is for the students who then go there and then we can't, because there's so, because of the number of students, then, and we can't offer the programs that they need. I mean, I, I mean, those parents are not going to be happy with us either. Because then they're going to say, well, you know, it's not fair. Our kids can go there and you can't even offer A, B, C, and D. And I understand that too. And then, otherwise, it then becomes a huge expense for the, for the school district to try to staff something when you don't really have the students to staff that. And I don't know, Dr. Bird, may I want to say more about that?
No, I was just going to, you talked earlier about the people on the redistricting committee and, and we do have a set number of people who sit in on all of those meetings. And then people are invited in as needed for their expertise. For example, anytime we're, we're talking about the possibility of a certain school being impacted by the redistricting, we always bring in that school's principal and allow him or her to give their perspective on what the proposal will mean, how it will impact their specific community. Because they're living there every day. They know their students, they know their parents, they know their community. And we want to make sure that we give them an opportunity to, to voice their opinions as well. So, you know, this is many, many days, many, many hours going through all the data to come up to where we are today. And again, not to be redundant, but it is a fluid process. And one of the things I'm really proud of about the school district, you know, this is only my second time going through redistricting in Forsyth County, but I've never worked anywhere which allowed the public to have such access and to give feedback and that the school board and the redistricting committee reads every single one of them. I experienced that last time around personally, which I think is great. I mean, we're, we're giving voice to our community. There may very well be items that surface that the redistricting committee didn't talk about. Now that we've read the feedback, we need to talk about it. We need to revisit. We need to look at the lines again. We need to, you know, move things around and see what the numbers look like. And, and as Mr. Perkel said, when it's all said and done and we come back to you in October with a recommendation, there, there may not be any changes. It may be, we still feel good about this recommendation and we think this is in the best interest of the district, but it also could be, we're going to make some recommended changes based on the feedback we received. But, you know, I just want to be clear that we read every one of them. And we, we get hundreds of them, we did last time. And we expect, we expect that. We expect that. But I say hundreds of them because literally hundreds of them are kind of the same feedback. So, yeah, thousands, but, you know, when you really start breaking it down, it turns into several issues, not.
Hundreds of issues.
Right. So it'll all be looked at.
The other thing, Joey, I, I know that you've mentioned this, but I cannot remember, the growth rate going forward for Lambert and for South Forsyth High School? What the percentages were that we were, that Tim had projected out?
South is seven point eight and four for Lambert.
Yeah, four, four something for Lambert, seven. I don't have that exact.
That's, that's what he told us.
Lambert being a little bit more built out since the growth started there first.
I mean, I would, I would, I would like to say that, you know, the, it's not mine nor the committee's intent to, you know, cause any harm to any child or student in this school district. I mean, I've been, you know, I, I've lived in this school district for, you know, at the end of this month, fifty-five years. And I've worked here for thirty-two years. And it's never been my intent to harm or hurt any child. But it's also, on the other hand, it's, you know, my job to try to do what's best for the entire district when we do this. And that can be very difficult sometimes. But I have to, and the committee's, again, task is to do what's best for the district when we're growing at a rate that, you know, we either have one of two choices. We either not build schools and just pile trailers everywhere and then deal with that, or either we build schools and somebody has to go there.
That's what I was going to say. You know, the number one complaint I hear from our community is that schools are over capacity. The number one complaint. And, and so we have to react to that. And so we, we knew, we're growing, so we have to build additional schools. But the other reality, and in some ways it's kind of a good thing, when we decide to open a new school, everybody agrees we need it, but send someone else's child, not mine, is typically the reaction we get. But right now, South is sitting at almost thirty-five hundred kids. Lambert's got over three thousand. West is at twenty-seven hundred. We need Denmark High School. Those schools are too large for the facilities we have. And the reality is, we have to populate Denmark High School. And just like Lambert and just like West, Denmark High School is going to be a great high school. And the community is going to work to make it great. And Heather Gorty, the principal of that school, is going to pull that community together to make it great. I know that's going to happen.
Thanks, Joey.
A couple, just to reiterate, this is a fluid process and we're just in the beginning. Some, mentioned some key dates coming up. The online feedback closes on September seventeenth.
September twenty-seventh.
I'm sorry, twenty-seventh. I've got my, too many dates here.
Okay.
On October twenty-fourth is the public forum at, at West Forsyth High. It was there because they had availability for space. So that is another opportunity for the public to speak. And we're particularly looking for things that have not been mentioned or have been mentioned before. So we're looking for all kinds of things at that moment. Just for high school at that point. And then we have a separate date.
October twenty-third.
Twenty-third. All right, and then the staff will present the final draft on November seventh. They'll do a second one after the, another one at the forum. The final plan at this point is on November fourteenth to approve the final line. So there is a lot of time left in the process and more opportunities for input. We're at the beginning. Thank you very much, Mr. Perkel.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the finance report with Mr. Rick Gunn.
Somebody wants to hear you, Rick.
I was a hard act to follow. Okay, tonight I brought you the financial statements for the month of August. Beginning of the month, we had almost forty-seven million in our operating checking account. Receipts and disbursements left us right at thirty-four million. So you can see we're pulling out a lot more than we're putting in, which is typical at this time of year. That's why we have a fund balance at the energy, so we can operate. We're starting to see some tax money coming in. We had a wire, we had a wire for about three million this month. So some of the escrow accounts are actually starting to pay now. So that's why we're seeing the money start trickling in since the tax bills had gone out. Year-to-date budget, revenues, not a lot to report, right at nine point six seven percent. As I said, we've only taken a little bit of tax money in. Summary of revenue and expenditures, expenditures of nine point six seven, excuse me, revenues of nine point six seven and expenditures of sixteen point nine. We should be at sixteen point seven percent. So we're right where we should be after school has just started. Debt service cash analysis for the month. Ending balance in debt service was five million. The splash four account had a little over forty-seven million. And you notice the splash five account, that's the new account we opened this month for the splash five. The first revenue coming in was a little over three point three million. The bond and splash investment activities for the month, that shows the disbursements as well as the, the new splash five that's been added. And this is our splash detail, only one month of detail. But you can see for the current month, three point three million. Previous month, three point one. But compared to the previous year, it's a thirteen point two percent increase. We've had several months in a row of over three million.
But three point three six six?
Yeah, that's, so hopefully that trend will continue.
Right. Especially in July.
Right.
Believe my mind.
Right, right. All the schools are reporting for the month. Elementary's had an ending balance of three point six million. Middle schools and high schools all reported one point three million for the middle, three point three for the high. And total at the schools is eight million two hundred thousand. So any questions on the financials for the month? All right.
Thank you. All right, we have policy revision GAE with Dr. Cindy Sloan.
Good evening. We have our current policy GAE excludes procedural deficiencies. Senate Bill three sixty-four changed that. We need to add a sentence called procedural deficiencies on the part of the school system are not excluded in the scope of the complaint. So we need to revise that. So would you please place on the table for approval next month the revision of policy GAE?
So that'll come back in a month for a vote then?
It will.
All right, thank you. We might not go too far there, Ms. Sloan. I believe our next action item, Ms. Sloan, Dr. Sloan? Action item.
I think you have the next one.
We're sending policy GBI. You're up next. Yep.
No, that was.
Nobody told you?
That's Kathy Carpenter.
I've got Dr. Sloan here.
GBI.
GBI, is that Kathy Carpenter, is that you?
That's Kathy.
Professional personnel evaluation.
It's the evaluation system, Cindy?
Professional personnel evaluation.
That you told us to rescind. I'm sorry. It's the one we don't need anymore because of that evaluation.
It's the evaluation, they're, they're using teaks to, to evaluate and you're saying you're going to rescind the whole policy.
Just give her a minute to catch up.
So then I can make a recommendation that we rescind policy GBI, please? I'm so sorry, because now it's covered by statute. I recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nancy, a second by Anne, all in favor? That is unanimous?
Thank you, I apologize.
All right, just go here, eighteenth local school board governance training program annual plan, training report.
We have policy.
Oh, it's the policy update.
Oh, sorry, Kathy, you're going to get up here. It's JR, yes. Oh, this has been, okay. You've done a lot of work on this one, so thank you.
I'm back. All right, so the last time we, I presented an update to policy JR, I saw legal feedback, more legal feedback, and then also just gathered other feedback from a variety of places. So as a result, I highlighted the changes in green from the other amended version of, or suggested version for policy JR. So a summary of those changes. From legal counsel, they said for us to take out mailing address under directory information because mailing address may be different from a home address. So for this, you know, P, a box, that kind of a thing. So that was a good change, so we made that change. In directory information, we are removing email address. And then deeper in the policy, there are some exceptions. So we're going to take out the statement except under the following circumstances because there was only one circumstance.
Just clean it up a little bit.
It just cleaned that up a little bit. And then there was another piece with a question about when the policy would become effective because we had started the school year. When we began this process of revision in the spring and because it bled over so far into the school year, I am suggesting that we don't make the policy effective until July first, two thousand eighteen.
Can we mention out for the, sorry? Excuse me. The email address, that was from the, the attorneys recommended that, to leave that out? Was that what the schools wanted to do or what is that?
Really, the email address piece, I, I really sought out a lot of feedback on that. And I kind of landed on, it's, it's about fifty-fifty. You know, when you talk to one person who says, yes, give my email address, then you talk to the next person and they say, no, don't. People are very, pretty much all over the place with that particular piece. So upon the attorney's suggestion, we took it out of directory information because directory information makes it just, you know, even though the language in the policy says that, that information may be given out, it does give it the presence of it will be given out. So the attorney's suggestion is that we refer to the, the writing in the last paragraph of the policy that says it's, the school may give student information like name, address, email address, personal information for purposes of marketing, which would relate to yearbooks, graduation, photography, those are the pieces. And what we're going to do is then put a statement in all of the student handbooks that says at the discretion of the principal, schools may disclose student name, grade, mailing and email addresses for the purposes of school photography, yearbook and graduation, graduation-related services. Parents and guardians may opt out by notifying the principal of the school and writing within ten days of the first day of school or of their enrollment date. And then as an added layer to make sure that we, make sure parents are notified and are given the option on the parent permission form that everybody fills out at the beginning of the school year, where you yes, no, to, you know, all sorts of things like field trips, surveys, all of those things. We'll add on another line item that says for marketing purposes and reiterate this statement. So not only is it in the school student handbook for people to see, but it's also a yes, no. I asked, we said to build a field in Infinite Campus where that information can be recorded and then we can query it when a yearbook company or a graduation company asks for that information. We know who our yeses are and we know who our no's are. Does that help?
So if a PTA in an elementary school needed email addresses for something within the school system, they could not have those email addresses, right?
Right now, the answer is no. But we could revise the student handbook statement to say that. Right now, the statement in the policy is that these things can be provided for marketing purposes, but then the student handbook would define who can receive that information.
But every PTA member, when they fill out a form, they, they have the option then to fill in an email at their choice, which is generally the parent. So I very much support that that was removed, the email, because in many cases, it's a student email. And I feel like as a parent, I shouldn't be permanently taking away my child's right to make a decision whether they want to be marketed to Downly Road. So I support the removal of that. And when it comes to PTA, the parent.
That's fine, I just wanted to know the rationale.
Yeah, so thank, you did a lot of work, so thank you on that, it was appreciated.
Any other questions? All right, Dr. Bird, I would like to ask you to make a motion that policy JR be updated as amended.
Recommend approval.
You have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Anne, a second by Nancy, all in favor? That is unanimous. We are down to points of information. I gotta think Dr. Bird's got one good one today.
I think you have local school board.
I keep, I check it off when I get to the next thing, that's why. I don't, I mean, we have the list that we all signed up for. Other than that, Sandy, is there anything you want me to?
No.
Just need to approve it.
Just need to prove it. We've all seen that, we've kind of signed up for different things. Do we all have a motion then to approve that?
May.
Motion by Darla.
Second.
Second by Nancy, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you.
Finally, I know there's good stuff for points of information today.
The really good news that came out today, for the third year, third year in a row, Forsyth County Schools had the highest ACT scores in the state of Georgia, which is something we're really, really proud of. Also wanted to let you know, I've started my tour.
Uh, also wanted to let you know, I've started my tour of schools for the first semester and have been in high school English classes last week and this week and some incredibly impressive stuff going on throughout the system. I wish everybody had that opportunity to see what I get to see on a, on a regular basis. It's consistently so good, no matter which school you go to, so, very impressive.
All right, that's it, all right, thank you. Do we have a mo, uh, do we have anything other than normal for executive?
No.
Do we have a motion to go in executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Motion by Nancy, a second by Darla, all in favor? That is unanimous.